Okay, before we start our meeting tonight, we're going to have an invocation going to be given by Riverboat tonight from the Bible Church. I never say Woodland Bible Church. I never say it right, I just say Bible Church. And we're going to have the pledge. So with that, I would like for us to, yeah, friends will lead us in the pledge. Remain standing.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given to us and for your help. Thank you for our city council and for our mayor. And we thank you that they are willing to do whatever it takes to help our city move smoothly. They have big decisions and we're asking for your leadership and guidance as they make those decisions. Continue to bless our city and help us to always remember how needful we are of you and how dependent we are on you. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. First thing I'll ask is if everybody will turn themselves on to a vibrate position. Secondly, we'll have a call.
Councilwoman Rish.
Present.
Councilman Weber. Councilman Shomel.
Present.
Councilman Nobby.
Here.
Councilwoman Montgomery.
Present.
Councilman Creach.
Present.
Councilwoman Stevens.
Present.
We have six members of the council present. We have a core who can do business. So we will do business. First item of business will be to welcome everybody that's here tonight. We appreciate you coming. I have the reading of the minutes of the January 21st, 2014 regular meeting.
I need to accept the minutes as they were presented to us.
Second.
Motion in the second to accept the minutes as they were presented. Any additions or corrections? And appearing all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. A request for match money for the housing project Star Development. Mark?
Yes.
You know, this goes back to Aqua Amazon Council, which was now seven years ago. We had the McCarty's and we repaired homes. And I think you guys have done one round since we've been here together.
Thanks.
It's a great deal. It helps a lot of families. So tonight, we're not.
I'll bring you up the date, whatever it takes. Keep my fingers working.
It's cold out, right?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Now, this is to do with the grant application. I haven't received the grant. The city's going to go in for $350,000. It's due February the 28th. The award date is April the 24th. When we had a workshop, we had a huge, huge turnout between the city of Connersville and Fayette County. We had them both at the same time down at the Mill Building. I think there was probably about 200 people. I mean, it's full from the front all the way to the back. I mean, that's probably one of the biggest turnouts we ever had. For the participants that came in, we have their applications on file. We have 58 applications. We got several more applications, but some of them was buying the house on land contract and the state will not allow that in this grant. Or some of them was over income by maybe a few hundred dollars to maybe a thousand dollars. So that narrowed it down to 58, so that's how we came down to 58 applicants. Of the 58 applicants, so we're going to do 50/50. We're going to do probably seven of them be elderly people and state considers that 55 and over. The other 50 will be female head of house with children. So we'll be doing those when we do score quite high of both of those places. The maximum amount of points you can get out of that is 25 points on the application, so we hit the maximum of that. Going down here, we'll, I need to talk to you about your local match money. Last time we put in $4,007. I think George been talking maybe about 3,500. But if you put in another $335, you get an extra point for that. So that brings it up to about $3,835. You get two points on the application. And the rest of the matching dollars will come from the donations of the contractor like they did last time. Donate material, labor, stuff like that. The next funding cycle and stuff like that will be probably in June. This funding cycle now, let everybody know, is very, very tight. They don't have a whole lot of money to go in. I think they're averaging about six applicants that go in. I mean, 16 applicants, and we'll fund probably about four. So we'll try to get as many points as we can. So when we see that one point you get for $355, it's where it works, they get that extra point. Other than that, we have, went and did a client intake on them to make sure everybody qualifies with the 58. We did that, make sure that they do own their own house. We did have some of them that they was renting, that they thought they qualified because they lived there, but they actually renting is owner occupied, so that he can qualify. But that's where we're at. There will be some paperwork that the mayor will have to sign off on, saying that he'll follow all the rules and regulations with the grant and no more grants that you do to the mayor. I think there's a half a dozen places you have to sign. But that's where we're at, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer any of them.
Yeah. I must not remember this or something. Can you explain what the project is? Because I don't, I'm not sure.
I don't think we've done it since you've been.
Yeah, I don't think I've.
We repair people's homes. We go in, put new roofs on. We've done bathroom floors. Whatever the scope of the work is that is approved, we do it. It's all, after it's done, it's inspected. And it's wonderful. It helps our families. It also helps us, because a lot of these homes might be abandoned if we didn't get this work done in there, especially with roofs.
And where's the grants come from? Is that from the state or where's the grant come from?
They go from the federal government, from HUD. They give so much money twice a year, the state does, and they have to give out to level unit of government as far as grants. So the individual cannot apply. It has to be there in the city, county, or somebody like that, or town.
Is this our fourth round or third round?
This is your third round, Mayor.
How many did we have?
Less. You might have some prior.
We've always done it with you.
How many did we have last year?
Last time we did 14.
So we're thinking that we'll get 14 this year, or?
Well, we're going, that money, we'll do 14 homes. Now, it's up to you guys and up to the mayor, if you want to go back in, keep going in to pick up the rest of the people. Like the city of Richmond, and like Newcastle and places, they keep going in each round. When we're done, we go back in, pick up some more people. But that's strictly you guys' call.
It helps our local contractors too, because he uses local contractors.
Correct.
And they really get a lot of work on this. They work all summer.
I think the last time we did that, we had three contractors from Connersville that was working.
So it's like a 1% match, is that right?
Yeah. Yeah, it's very low for your return. So you get a good return on your money first.
We're going to take that match out of the riverboat. That's what I'm asking you to do tonight. It's okay, public hearing, to take that match out there and then I'll, we won't tell him that we can go ahead with this.
Another question here. You say you're going to put in for these 14, and what's the likelihood we get those? I mean, is it slim, none?
Well, let's put this way, the Star Development, my wife's company, she's president, I'm vice president. We've never been turned down on any grant that we went after for, we've been in the business now for 15 years. So that's the type of record we have. But we're going into a new era now. The federal government's cutting money. So there's not as much money there, but you got same amount of people participating. So if you don't get funded this round, what we'll like to do is try to put you in the next round, the June round, because that's when they have the most of their money.
And how many rounds they have here?
Two.
Just two.
Mark, do we, we get some credit for our unemployment and our low income, don't we?
Yeah.
Yes.
The state gets plenty of points for that, but we don't know what that is. It's not in the application. They do it internally on that. But we did, we do talk about that. Now, if we're done with this, I got one other thing that you guys chew on.
Yeah, go ahead.
How much, do we, you talked about extra points, how much, what's the total amount of money?
Okay, the total amount of points is 95 points. Nobody ever hits 95 points. It's almost impossible. The closest ones will do that will be communities along the Ohio River. They got a lot of giving them money, casino money. I think they'll win a bunch of money. They might go in $20,000. You know, where communities up in this area don't get that general money, so they count on contractors' donation to get that money back. For the last 15 years, only one local around here that maxes out on their points is Richmond. They put in $60,000 or so. But this last round, they didn't do it because they're running out of money.
I have a question. Do you guys set up all the criteria that, like what gets fixed?
Okay, it's health and safety issues first. The state sets this up now. In the old days, we used to go and say, hey, what do you want to have done? I see that you need a new roof and stuff like that. Now, the state says, I have to take pictures of what's going to be done. And that gets sent out to the environmental services, Section 106, historical people, and they have to prove the work that's going to be done to the house. They might say, hey, Mark, we need more pictures on the 106 Walnut Street on the roof. Or what type of siding does it have on there? They have to be siding because it's a historical house, and they have a lot of, we'll talk back and forth about it. But a lot of it's furnaces, like the mayor said, roofs, windows, siding, electrical. We get a lot of people that the mayor was talking about bathroom updates because they're elderly and they can't walk around, they might need draft bars, toilet, higher toilets, stuff like that.
Furnaces, are they included?
Yes. But now, since you've said that, the state says that the homeowner has to have an independent person to come in and say, yes, they need a person. Usually, that person who does ask will try to get that job. And it's a crazy rule, but, you know, so yeah, you'll get a person, person, but hey, yeah.
There are a lot of crazy rules.
Yes. So it's one of those, yeah, the furnaces and activities are there, but once again, if you want central air, you have to get a doctor to say that you need it because of asthma or health problems. I just can't go in there and say, yeah, we're putting one in.
So if we were, let's say we replace this one, or put the grant for this cycle, and we were to get all 14 of them, is there anything stopping us from the June cycle?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
You have to be completely done with this one here to go back in.
Okay.
Not to say that we can't get done really fast, once again, it's what the weather's doing now. I got a line of probably about 156 homes I'm waiting to get worked out on, but nobody can get out there and put the roofs on or put the siding on because of the type of weather we're having. So this one here has to be totally closed down before you go back in again.
That would be about impossible, because it takes a long time to close a grant.
Yeah. Takes about a year.
But it's a wonderful project. If we could keep these things moving in our city, it helps our people.
I know the participants, the people who came, someone was crying when he left, you know, because they really needed the help. You know, I told them, I can't make no promises, there's no guarantee that you get the grant. The city's trying to get the grant. But I got a person that's living in a shelter here in Connersville that somebody stole or plumbing out of our house and stuff like that. Gets to that point, most likely is beyond repair. By just, you know, thinking logically, really. But there's a lot of people that's very happy that you guys, the mayor, that you're going in.
And you said your extra point would be, instead of having 35,000, it'd be 38, 35, is that right?
Correct. And with this matching bonus, once again, I know some of you people knew that, know this, but maybe you don't. If we don't get the grant, then your matching bonus, say, where they're at, only time you use it is if you get the grant. And for Star Development to get paid, if you don't get the grant, Star Development don't get paid. So we're already set on this.
Now, you want more discussion, or you want a motion? No, I'll tell you where we are on this. We have worked with Star Development way back when I was on council. I remember, like we've counted. And I think you can correct me. We've had one problem in our entire life together.
Correct.
That's unusual, to fix as many homes as we've done. And what we've done, we've had one problem where we had to tear the roof off twice.
Correct.
And that wasn't our fault.
Correct.
Wasn't your fault, it was the city's fault.
That's right.
But it got done at no cost to the individual that owned the house. Zero. So it's a wonderful program. It helps our people. I wish we could go in every three months and do it. And it helps our contractors, it'll keep them busy. It helps us from having to tear houses down, like he just described it, where they stole plumbing out and abandoned them. It's a, it's a great project. I'll take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, and I think the gentleman, just in the amount of 38, 35.
Second.
Yes.
You want to advertise for public hearing on the riverboat? Please. Is there a second?
Yes.
You got a second? Okay. Got a motion in a second to go ahead and okay the match fund for this grant. Is there any further discussion? Is there anybody out there that would like to discuss it? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? You said you had something else you wanted to discuss with us.
Yeah, if you're interested. Richmond's heavily interested in, the bigger cities are really heavily interested in this. It's called the Hardest Hit Fund, but if you watch Channel 13 News tonight, it was on the news. Indianapolis is tearing down a bunch of homes. And what it is, is through the same state agency, the Indiana Housing Finance Authority, if you have one of your workers or somebody wants to look that up, they can. It's called the Hardest Hit Fund. And it's TARP money. Does anybody know what TARP money is? That's where the banks, five biggest banks up on Wall Street got in trouble because they was foreclosing on people and stuff. But they got billions of dollars back to the federal government. And don't hold me to this dollar figure, because I meant to me, but I think Indiana got like 2.5 billion dollars.
I heard 221 million.
Okay.
I don't.
Don't hold me to the dollars. Is there somebody out here, some members?
My secretary's not, I think we got.
221.7 million.
Ah, my mind's still pretty good anyway.
Okay. And of this, so much of this money is going to be given out to what we give to the government to tear down abandoned, blighted homes. Now, the meeting that I went to, you don't have to pay union wages. You don't have to do the environmental, like I do on these homes, like the historical and stuff. You don't have to do none of that. So that's a big plus. It gets the paperwork through a lot faster. The hardest part is, you have to find out who owns that property. So it might be a bank in California. It could be Mr. Harris lives down here on the street corner. If you don't have a basement, you can get a matching number of $15,000 per property. A lot of towns, like in Cambridge City, we're going to go after, we think that we could buy a home for around maybe $2,000 to $4,000 of the 15, so that'd be about $9,000 to tear it down. And we think that we could tear it down a lot of homes for about $5,000 to $4,000, $5,000, depends what structure is. Now, if it has a basement in it, the maximum you can get for each property is $25,000. Now, if you don't use all that money, it just keeps going and going and going. Now, there is a local match, dollar match, is 10%. So if you ask for $50,000, you have to come up with $5,000 rent match.
So does the city own the property afterwards?
The city does own the property, because you buy it, actually. The city is buying it.
The city has to own the property then, before they tear it down.
Correct. So with this, it's a three-year cycle, but it's a one-time shot. This is, we're not going to do it again. You got three years to get it completed. After you tear down the house, they got a lot of different options you could do. You could use it for green space, far as a park, or you could give it to Habitat Humanity, put another house there. Or you could sell the property between the two property owners. So if you got two property owners, you could sell that one, or you could sell it to the one property owner. Like us in Cambridge and I think the city of Richmond, we don't want the property. We just want to clean up the bad areas of the town that we know nobody's going to live there. And what the Hardest Hit Fund is supposed to do is supposed to help keep the values of other people's property up. So if you tear down this house, it might help out the other houses around there, keep their value up. But it was on Channel 13 News tonight, they was talking about it there. So if you get, go home and get them the door latch, you probably pulled up. It's called the Hardest Hit Fund. The first two guinea pigs they said there's going to be in this was going to be Marion County first and Lake County. Of course, that's the two biggest areas to work out the profits, because this is a brand-new grant through, for the entire state. But they're looking for applications going in, I think, June of this year.
We're going to have some seminars on that, and we'll know what we're doing.
So, and what they're saying, one of the things they're going to look at on the application, why did you pick this house as number one to be tore down? Of course, I'm just using as an example, you might have a main street going downtown that you got a bad house there. That could be because of that. How many far runs you've been with that house? How many, how many officers, police officers went there to run the kids off far as doing drugs or busting out windows? They want that type of documentation on the grant. There is a little bit of money for the random illustrator. For us, it's not nothing. It's like $200 per property. So it's not a whole lot of money for us, but it's something out there that you really need to look into if you want to, because your matching dollars is pretty low to what you get. You know, if you get $50,000, $100,000, you could probably tear down quite a few homes and make the area look a lot better if you got three or four homes real bad in a row.
Now, you said you could sell the property?
Mm-hmm.
If you sell the property, can you use that money then to tear down other ones?
If you sell the property, the money goes back to the state.
You have to own the, the city has to own the property.
Yeah, but soon as the city owns it's.
The city owns the property, but you can sell it. But as soon as you make that, how everybody looked at it, and the state even said this at our meetings over here at Richmond, we can't see nobody making a dime off of it. Because we have tore down houses before in Cambridge City that we've been in the hole.
Yeah.
You know, we just did it because we cleaned up the area.
We've never done anything but go in and out.
Yeah. So if you make money off of it, it goes back to the state.
What if it just helps cover the costs? Does that money go back in that fund to tear down other ones?
It goes back to the state. They, they'll, you know, put something to do with housing or, I don't know what, but this is only a one-time shot.
The quirk in this thing, and we've been looking at this, I think I talked to you about it last meeting, the quirk in it is you got to own the property. And as he says, sometimes we'll, we'll work days trying to figure out, and then you get to Arizona, and the lady says, yeah, we had a mortgage on that. What'd you do? We washed our hands of it. That's as far as you get to hang up on you.
Yeah.
So that's our problem. But there are homes here in town that we could pursue. And an example would be the one we've argued about for the last six months. We know where that owner, in fact, I found out now, there's two owners, we think. We could go to that owner and say, hey, you know, we could tear this down if you'll sign it over to the city. Will it happen? I don't know.
But that's something you need to chew on yourself. You got a little while if you want us to be participants to help out with the grant. But the hardest thing to, kind of, is you'll find your houses pretty quick. You kind of met it already.
We've got a list of about.
The hardest part is, like the mayor's saying, who owns that property? So you might have to get with a realtor. You might have to pay her extra money to help the city out to find out who owns that property.
You invite a courthouse often, they can find the owner over there.
Even the state system will try to help out.
They know who the owner is, but the owner's not there. I mean, they tell us that the owner is so-and-so. Arizona's a big state.
Then locating them, right.
Who sets the price of the property?
Well, they kind of left that up in the air. It's going to be a negotiation, but let's say, once again, you got the grant, it's no basement, so that means you only got $15,000 in that property, right? So you want to buy that property as low as mouth. You don't want to pay $14,000 for a property that will cost you $6,000. The state's going to say, no, we're not, we're not touching it, unless you guys want to put in there for money, right? So you have to drill down, as a group here, drill down and say, hey, these are the dollar figures we're looking at to buy these properties, are you interested? Of course, the property owner might say, no, I'm not, you're not buying, because they might think it's the big golden they got there that's coming down, so.
Well, you know, now we have to go to court and get a judgment to.
But we can't do that, because we got owner to tear it down.
Tell you these houses now, we have to go to court. The judge has to rule that it is a violation of our ordinances, and then we have permission to tear it down.
But they're looking at vacant homes.
We can, you can go to the commissioners, and if, you can get the commissioners that commissioner's, so you can buy the sale through the commissioner. You can't on a tax sale, because you got to wait a year, but you can on the commissioner.
Yes.
But you gamble then, you may end up owning two or three, you know, but.
But that's something you guys need to talk yourselves. I'm just throwing that out there, it's a new grant that came down the road, they had a big meeting in Richmond, and I went to that, and they, they got thrown around up there.
Is the state taking applications now?
No, they will not take applications until probably June 1st. But the first two that they're going to start on is Marion County and Lake County. I think that starts in February, they said, because they want to work out the buzz for the rest of the state.
They said the money would be distributed evenly.
Yeah, Lake County.
It's not supposed to all go to Marion County.
Marion County, and Lake County.
You know, we should get a portion.
Okay. But yeah, we need to look at that.
But you need, well, anything I say, you need to start early on, start mapping out your houses.
We've already done this. I was scheduled to go to the meeting, and you know, the night they had the meeting, it snowed at Chork's Amherst.
Correct.
Ben and I were going to go, so we couldn't go. But I contacted IAC, and they're going to have some seminars we're going to attend. So I think we're going to be up on this. The question is, do you want to hire Star Development to do this, or do you want to have our own grant writer try to blow a new ground and learn how to do this? Are you going to charge 200 bucks a house? Or how are you going to get paid?
Well, we'll probably not charge 200 bucks a house if we go down the road to do this. It's more of a nuisance to us, be quite honest with you, than get good. We'll help you guys out if you want us to. But as far as us, it ain't like this type of grant here that I mentioned.
Would you prefer to use our own grant or help us with it?
Well, I'll tell you what, Mayor, we'll talk to you when you get to that point. I'm willing to do, to help you guys out, you know. If you want us to be involved, we'll be involved.
I've been talking to Jody Woods up at IAC, and they don't have all the rules and regulations down there. They don't know, like you say, they're doing this.
It will be about the same thing we do with the draws. We'll put the draws in for you. The thing is, with you people, you probably have to figure out if you want one contractor, instead of you going to use local people.
But you can bid on it.
Correct, Mayor. You might want one contractor, say he's going to be a little bidder of all these homes, or you could just say, hey, we're putting it out like we do, you know? You bid on each separate home for what it is. You bid on each separate home for what it is. But that's something you got to do, I don't want to hold all your time up on this.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We got this statement here, we're going to go after fixing up some homes. Okay, we got Resolution twenty-fourteen dash oh four, reimbursement on the telephone, three hundred and forty dollars, that's your due income.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I move to accept Resolution twenty-fourteen oh four.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to accept Resolution twenty-fifteen oh four, reimbursement three hundred and forty dollars telephone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion taken. Canadian ordinance thirty-one oh one, this is a salary ordinance and we're not going to do it. We're going to table it till next time. We passed that through the board of works today, but Julie didn't have time to rewrite the ordinance and there were a couple of words in it that was incorrect. So we're going to wait until the next meeting and bring that to you. Old business. Anybody got any old business? No business? Miscellaneous business? Anybody got any miscellaneous business? Nancy?
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Debbie?
Yeah.
Eve?
Can you stop the stuff?
I had the thinking.
Okay. Public forum, somebody needs to talk.
Mayor, are you going to get my officer in here?
Yeah. I'm going to take that here in just a minute. I'm going to tell you a few things where we are. Everybody says, do you have enough salt? I think we got enough salt for one more storm. And after that, we can't have no more storms.
We got two coming.
Well, the other one's got to grow some themselves. We're, we're cutting it now, we're using two-thirds sand and one-third salt. They may be all sand here before the winter's over. Any questions for the street department? I think we've done pretty well for what we have to deal with.
Is there some way we can show this out front for Karst Park along the curb?
I'll tell you what happened, Nancy. They were busy plowing streets and everything. I plowed this with my little pickup truck and I couldn't plow where you're parked. I plowed the parking lot, but I couldn't plow this with my own truck. They were busy, they were out with the big trucks and the pickup trucks. We had worked them Saturday and Sunday. We really should have called them in again Sunday night, just before it froze, before that real cold, and we didn't. Because, you know, we've been burning up the overtime, burning up the salt, but it's our fault that that looks like that. I'm sorry, and I couldn't get it with my truck.
Well, John brought his shovels so I could get down to my car.
Yeah, it's, it's, you need to park the lot, this lot, this lot's pretty good shape. In the, in the police lot.
Where you park?
Park in the police lot. They won't tow you away, Nancy, I can guarantee it.
I did have a question. I had someone call and ask me about Fifth Street Bridge. I know you guys are definitely covered up. Is there a way they could use community corrections to shovel that off when we're getting all that? Or is there a contractor?
It hasn't worked yet.
Okay.
I'll tell you what, I'm going to propose to you. If we can find the money, we need to buy about a fourteen horse or a twenty horse John Deere tractor. The, the bridge is too narrow to get on with anything.
Yeah.
So we got to send guys over to shovel. All that salt is on there and you got to throw it over the bridge. You can't throw it out the road.
Yeah.
We need something like that to go over that.
Well, can community corrections go over there or is that a?
They haven't.
They haven't, but it's, like the mayor says, it's so narrow and once the state throws it and throws the stuff on it, it gets harder than concrete, the ice itself, and there's just not a lot of ways you can just shovel that ice. It's pretty, it's pretty thick at times because of the state throwing it up on the, on the sidewalk. It's just one of those situations. Park really, I think we've done a good job with Park doing the sidewalk this winter, so it's just something that's just hard to get to.
It's Saturday morning, we called them in. I was over there and watched the system. It's, you know, first of all, the police need to call him. He needs to get dressed, get down to the shop, and he's got to go to the union call. He's got to start at the top. Sometimes they don't answer. Sometimes they won't come in, and then if they won't come in, then he's got to start back up the list and force the lowest union to come in. You've probably got an hour, hour and a half by the time you get that first truck on the road.
Oh, I'm not blaming them, I'm saying they've done a great job. I just wondered if there's a way to get other help for them or.
We do have an apparatus for the, for the backhofer over there, but it gets ice like that, it's just, yeah. It's, it's on the bucket, it's, it's an arm that sticks out and you go down and you slide. There's not enough weight to hold it down and it just goes over the top of the ice. And that's the only piece of equipment we really have for that sidewalk.
We need to talk about that when we get through this bad winter.
I have a comment. On Western Avenue, I know there were potholes and I know they fixed them, but there's a pretty large one under the railroad tracks.
And it keeps coming back.
Yeah, it keeps coming back, it cannot keep it full.
It's, it's moisture in there. We've fixed that at least three times.
Oh, yeah, it's a pretty size hole and I just can't, until the weather changes, I, I just not a lot, I guess I can do with it because it keeps coming up.
Nancy, you brought up a good thing. You know what I think? I, I was looking at that, Western Avenue all the way from Therry to your house is terrible. Here's what I think. If the board of works will let me do it, I'd like to just bid Western Avenue to grant it and resurface it all this year, if we can afford it. And we'll bid just that street and we won't do any other streets.
You know, your Western Avenue has picked up so much more traffic in the last year because Walmart.
Oh, it's unbelievable.
The, the snow, a few snows ago, I don't know how many it was, but it snowed like eight, eight hours that day. And everybody going to Walmart to get them a little bread or whatever, or some toothpaste, I don't know what they all go there for, but anyway, it just keeps packing it down. And in, in the meantime, it builds up in the, in the street. And, you know, it's that cold, there's just nothing you can do with that ice. Indianapolis had the same problem. Ballard got the same complaints that we did. You know, you didn't get it off, it won't come off.
Well, seventy, seventy was like that.
Yeah, oh, seventy was terrible. Absolutely terrible. It was terrible, beat you to death.
And semis that, that go up and down is, it's totally unbelievable. It's like throwing it in the minute.
And you see it too, but there's more truck traffic on it than ever before too.
Well, we fixed Eastern last year. We, Central's in pretty good shape. Grant is being done by the grant because we're doing the streetscape, so we can't do much on there. And I just thought, maybe I'll ask Julie to just advertise and we'll just do all of Western Avenue if we can do it. And build it up good and have a decent street north and south because that's the ones being used. You guys can think about it. Usually I ask you in your districts what you want to do. I would have to spend every penny we got to do Western.
It's twenty-four seven traffic.
Exactly.
The only problem I see with the.
I hear complaints about the four-way stops. If you turn them out.
It'd take about five days.
Maybe seventy mile an hour up and down that street.
Yeah, grind it two days.
I don't want the four-way stops seen more than anybody else, but you got to have something and then place to slow the trucks down.
And add backups all day and all.
And that's another thing I'd like to ask you. Why don't you let us try changing the stoplight at twenty-first to caution north and south and stop east and west? You just stop there for nothing. You just stop for nothing. There's nobody going east and west since the factories aren't over there anymore. If we tried it for a month and we, it don't work, we'll turn it back like it is. But I'd like to just try it and see. I don't think they'll go any faster because here's what they do. When they leave twenty-first, boom, they jump on it all the way up to your house.
Right.
Eighteenth Street gets a lot of traffic.
No, but on twenty-first, they don't.
Right, but Eighteenth, I'd, I'd leave it like it is.
But why can't we? John, is it legal for us to try something?
Well, we have to do it by amending the ordinance.
Just to try it?
Sure.
Do you have any comments on it?
Yeah, I, I agree, something needs to be done with four-way stops or tearing the streets up too. In the summertime, it started worse more than, it was real hot outside, trucks coming down here and stopping and starting again and.
Oh, it may not work, but I'd like to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If I may, Dave will probably remember this. I worked at D and M in the sixties and seventies and back then, the police department used to come there every day at lunch and at quitting time and direct traffic. And that's the reason that, you remember that, that's the reason that stoplight came there.
Well, that used to have a traffic control signal there.
Yeah, but this was prior to that. We, you know, that, that's what, so they ended up putting that stoplight in and the flasher thing, but I think there at twenty-first, I, I kind of agree with what you'd say, we could go with a cau, with a caution. And there at Eighteenth, I do see quite a bit of semis coming in there. I think they have to have a way out of there.
Well, if you give me permission, I'll have John prepare an ordinance and we'll try for a month.
That's how I feel about it.
Anybody have a problem with that?
Yeah.
John, if you'll get that ready for us.
What's the street again?
Twenty-first and West Street. Okay. Well, I was, I'm glad you brought that up, Nancy, because I've been driving up and down there and of course I have to go home that way. Man, it's rough and we've got so many holes in it and it's patchy.
Passed a bunch on the guys, but passed a bunch on today, but they were getting back into below zero again at the end of this week and.
It's going to be bad.
Say that, Dave. It's seventy degrees.
Whenever it stops, we'll fix them right.
Ruby, you live on Western, you got any comment?
Pretty busy. Twenty-ninth Street, they're always waiting to pull out.
All right. Anything else under public forum? Anything at all? Skip that. Unless you folks got something, I'm ready to adjourn.
Do something.
Oh, no, we can adjourn. Oh, my gosh, I almost forgot you, Dave. Bring your man in. We, we promoted three officers to, I don't have it before me, but we've promoted lieutenant, sergeants.
Ryan's good.
Ryan Evans is going to be promoted to.
Sergeant.
Sergeant.
So today we promoted Officer Dax Gunder and Ryan Evans here and also Chris Guy. Chris went to lieutenant and Ryan Dax went to sergeant to fill in the vacancies from Frank retiring, then we moved to lieutenant over that, so they kind of went up the ranks. So at this time, he wasn't here today, he was tied up in court and he couldn't be here when we pinned the other ones on and, and so he's here for the council meeting to have this done. So I'm going to put his badge on him and. I'll try and knock them other guys, they'd say ouch or nothing. Ow. Tell you what. I'll tell you what, I have to stay here in this light. Do you have a badge in there for him? I got a cricket. There it goes. Hang on a minute. It isn't that close, I'm going to poke myself. There you go, sir. It took me almost that long to get that. And you ran for the mayor a minute ago, you said.
How many years have you been on the police department?
Thirteen and a half, thirteen and a half.
And it's your first promotion?
Uh, second.
Well, we're proud of you and we're glad to have you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Get back.
He's listening. Someone will, Dave, will you do the lights for me? This won't take long, I want to explain something to you. You put your attention, and all of you see this pretty good? Light just lights down there. This is in Wolf's Gun Shop, this is your chief of police. He's looking at a new gun.